I'd like to call the Menor City Council organizational meeting of Tuesday, January 9, 2018, to order. At this time, Councilman Krieger will give the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, this is our organizational meeting, so the first business is the alts of office, and I guess I'm going first.
I, Janet A. Dowling.
I, Janet A. Dowling.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter and ordinances.
of the charter and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully discharge the duties.
and will faithfully discharge the duties.
of the office of councilwoman at large.
of the office of councilwoman at large.
term ending December 31, 2021.
term ending December 31, 2021. Just want to take the opportunity just to thank a few people. The past two years have been pretty exciting, being the first female council president. I wanted to thank city manager Philippiak and his entire staff. They've been more than cooperative council. I thank you for the faith you put in me and for the honor of serving you. Richard, for your counsel all the time, and Julie, I can't express my appreciation to you for all the help you've been, so thank you.
I, Scott J. Marne.
I, Scott J. Marne.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter and ordinances.
of the charter and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
of councilman at large.
councilman at large.
term ending January 1, 2022.
January 2. January 1, you're right.
Right.
January 1, 2022.
I was right.
January 2, that's when it starts.
Yeah, but it ends.
Right, okay, gotcha.
Please sign.
Trying to pick up an extra day.
We got a close.
I thought I had you, Richard.
Once again, I wiggle out.
Trust me, it's very hard to get Richard on something, and I always try, and when I do, I never let him forget it. But, no, it's a pleasure and honest thank you for the citizens of Mentor for the last 18 years. It's been a long time. As I look on the crowd, Wendy and I, we were told we weren't supposed to have kids, and so my first election day, Wendy thought she had the flu, and it turned out she was pregnant with Dylan, and now we're looking at colleges. And then we were supposed to be told we weren't supposed to have any other kids, and then it was the election, we were running for election back in '05, right? Yeah, '05, see? And pregnant again. So every time I run for election, I get a little concerned that she might be pregnant again. But it's been a privilege and an honor, and I can't thank the, this council's one of the best councils I've ever had to work with, this administration. All the administrations and people of Mentor and the past councils, you guys really are all family and friends, and I can't thank you enough. And the one good thing about family, you guys all remember, you can't pick family, so you're stuck with me for another four years. So thank you very much, and thanks again.
Yeah.
I, Ray Kirchner.
I, Ray Kirchner.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions of the charter.
observe the provisions of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office of councilman at large.
the duties of councilman at large.
term ending January 2, 2022.
term ending January 2, 2022. Thank you. Let me just say that this is the most positive and productive council I've had the pleasure of working with in my 16 years on city council, and I'm looking forward to many more accomplishments going forward into this next term, and I want to just thank all the residents of the city of Mentor for their continuing support over the years. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have some very important business. We will have, oh, I'm sorry, we need to do the roll call first. Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Lanning.
Here.
Mr. Marne.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Okay, it wasn't really that big of a hurry, but, okay, we will have the election of the president of council, so that this time, do I hear a nomination?
Mrs. President, I'd like to nominate John Krieger.
Second.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Julie, please call the roll. Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Okay, before we move on, I just want to say something. I'm looking at the Krieger family, and I realize for John's mom what an exciting night this must be. This is definitely a banner evening for residents that haven't been in Mentor a long time. John's father was council president, and now he's following in his footsteps, so we're very honored to have John serve in this role. So, welcome, John.
Thank you.
Now you have to be sworn in.
I, John A. Krieger.
I, John A. Krieger.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter and ordinances.
of the charter and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office of president of council.
the duties of the office of the president of council.
Thank you. I'm going to echo a lot of the things that some of our, my predecessors have said as far as the council. We've got so much accomplished in the last six years that I've been on council. I take a lot of solace in the fact that my fellow councilpeople thought enough of me to nominate me for president and elect me for president, and they say behind every great man is a good woman. I've got two. I've got my mother and my wife. I got my grandkids over here, son-in-law, Owen, a friend. So, thank you for this honor. Janet, we ready?
Yep.
You're up, pull up, you're up for it.
Well, thank you.
Change in signs.
I have a little present in your chair.
Switch there.
Those are the shoes to fill.
They gave me shoes to fill.
And you wanted to tie the match.
We will now proceed with the election of vice president of council. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. President.
Yes.
And I'm happy to be the first to call you, Mr. President. I would like to nominate Bruce Lanning for vice president.
Second. Do I hear any other nominations? Nomination are closed. Julie?
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
I, Bruce Lanning.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws.
and will obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions of the charter.
observe the provisions of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the municipality of Mentor.
of the municipality of Mentor.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office of vice president of council.
the duties of the office of vice president of council. Well, it is an honor to serve this group, as others have said, and it's my privilege to serve John then and fulfill whatever duties he assigns to me. I get to stay in my seat where I was, and as vice chair, it's a little bit in the shadows, I hope, but if I am able to serve the council in that way, that is where I really would like to be. So, thank you.
All right, I understand we have a presentation this evening by Mr. Felice. Mr. Felice, you want to step forward? Well, and your group. Thank you.
As some of you know, my name is John Felice. I've resided in Mentor my entire life. Tonight, I'd like to make some introductions. First, we have Lance C. Knight, who is a past state president of the Ohio Elks Association. We have Valerie Lawver, who is a past exalted ruler of the Willoughby Cleveland Elks Lodge Number 18, and we have Susan Knight, who is the esteemed leading knight of the Willoughby Cleveland Elks Lodge Number 18. Those are pretty lofty titles for people who probably for the last 20 years have donated at least 10 hours a week to serve their community and the benevolent and protective order of Elks of the United States of America. Tonight, we are here with the Mentor Fire Safety Village and Ron Wassum and some other representatives, Ken Whiting and Nate, and I can't remember.
Jerry.
Jerry. I would say it's a conservative estimate to say that the Willoughby Cleveland Elks Lodge donates almost $10,000 yearly to the local community. Tonight, we are here to make a donation to the Mentor Fire Safety Village with the amount of $500. I'll have Ron Wassum detail that, what we're going to use it for, but I would also like to say that in the past, some of you may not be aware, we have donated $500 once before to the Fire Safety Village. We've donated $500 to the Mentor Police Department for digital cameras and docking stations, as well as $500 for bicycle helmets for the police department to put in the trunks of their cruisers to give to kids who do not have them. That was a number of years ago, and Marilyn Satterfield facilitated that. Two or three years ago, we donated $750 to the invasive weed project at the Mentor Lagoons. As members of the Elks, we feel it's important that we want our communities to be safe and to educate our youth, because the communities that we work, recreate, and live in want to prosper for all. So, Ron, if you could explain what this would be used for, I would be most appreciative.
Thank you, John. We're fortunate to have organizations like the Elks who donate not only their time but their money that they raise to various departments and entities throughout the county. This money, we use for the third graders. It assists us in the cost for the busing of the third graders from the Mentor schools, the parochial schools, and for the last two years has assisted us in bringing homeschoolers into the program and covering a larger number of kids in a program that all of you know has been written up numerous times in the paper and on television for what these kids learn, saving lives. It's been proven time and again, it's a program that, that we're fortunate that we have council, the city manager and his staff, we have Chief Searls who backs us, and it's just a wonderful thing, and them stepping forward as they have in the past, this is the second time, it just helps us because we, we're like anybody. We try to raise money and make this program work, and every year, sometimes we worry about where's the money going to come from, but we work it out. So, John, the Elks, thank you all very much, because you're helping us help the community and save lives.
Ron, thank you very much.
John, thank you.
I'd like to take this time to thank former president Dowling and Chief Searls for helping facilitate this. I would encourage anyone who has the time to go to the Elks National, elks.org, which is our national website, and click on the Elks National Foundation tab. The Elks National Foundation is where this money came from, and you would be surprised at what we do in the local community. It might be worth the time when you have some free moments in front of your computer at work and no one's watching. I think the Elks is a great organization, and we're very pleased to be able to donate back to the city that we live in. Thank you, council.
Thanks, John.
Okay, moving right along. Council, you have the minutes of the work session of December 5, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
And the minutes of the regular meeting of December 5, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Okay, public hearings, we have none. New legislation? Ordinance Number 18-0-001.
An ordinance amending Part 1, Title 9, Chapter 191 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, the same relating to income tax affected January 1, 2016, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hinni?
Thank you. As part of the state budget that was passed last year, there were some revisions made to the code, the state code, relative to municipal income taxes. Those changes were not going to become effective until 2007, 2018, and so they weren't introduced right away. We have received sample language from the Regional Income Tax Agency relative to how to best write those changes, and those are what are before you tonight. They mainly deal with definitions of taxable income and elections made under the provisions for taxable income and specifically related to C corporations. There are some other housekeeping measures throughout the ordinance. This is not an entire rewrite of our existing tax chapter. It's merely selected provisions where there were changes to the state tax code. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them. I do want it passed tonight, though, because we want everybody to understand that these tax requirements will be for this tax year.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 18-0-001 has been approved. Ordinance Number 18-0-002.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a change order to JTO Inc. for the Plaza Boulevard Extension Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, Stephen.
Thank you.
Council, we expect this will be the final change order for the general contract for the Plaza Boulevard Extension Project.
We hope.
Mr. Swiger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. The change order before you tonight, change order number five, is a near-final change order to the contract with JTO Incorporated for the Plaza Boulevard Extension Project. Change order number five represents the following. A 156-day extension of the contract completion date. Believe it or not, the original completion date was July 15 of 2014. The current completion date is October 27, 2017. The new completion date is set for April 1, 2018. Adjustments to line item quantities for actual quantities installed. Asphalt pavement installation near and between CSX and NS railroad tracks that was not part of the original contract, that's approximately a $75,000 item. Additional boring and conduit installation performed near and underneath the CSX and NS railroad tracks, and that accounted for about $155,000. The net amount of change order number five is $216,138.72. It is recommended the change order number five be approved in that amount for the actual line item quantities installed and the additional work performed by JTO Incorporated. The current contract amount is $2,703,338.79. Change order number five will result in revised contract price of $2,919,477.51. Overall, between JTO, CSX, and Norfolk Southern, the city has invested approximately $4,800,000 in construction-related costs. It is expected that CSX will finish their track crossing work by the end of January. A live testing period will immediately follow. The period is estimated to last between 30 and 60 days. As I mentioned, the revised completion date with JTO Incorporated is April 1 of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 18-0-002 has been approved. Ordinance Number 18-0-003.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into insurance contracts during the year 2018 for and on behalf of the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President, and ordinances Number 18-003 through 007 are usually the first ordinances we bring to council that provides ongoing authority to the administration to purchase required goods, mostly commodities, that we require in an ongoing basis, and council provides spending authority to allow us to do so. This first ordinance is for insurance purposes, and predominantly, this is for negotiating and entering into agreements for health, care, and general liability insurance.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 18-0-003 has been approved. Ordinance Number 18-0-004.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into electricity purchase contracts for municipal facilities during the year 2018 upon such terms and at such prices as are deemed most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Nothing further to add.
Move to suspend.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 18-0-004 has been approved. Ordinance Number 18-0-005.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into natural gas purchase contracts for municipal facilities during the year 2018 upon such terms and at such prices as are deemed most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing further to add.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 18-0-006.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase motor vehicle fuels during the year 2018 upon such terms and at such prices are deemed most advantageous to the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Nothing further to add, Mr. President.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 18-0-006 has been approved. Ordinance Number 18-0-007.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a participation agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation relative to the purchase of rock salt and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President, and given the fact that we're using quite a bit of this lately, I think I can offer Mr. Schweickert an opportunity to make comment.[1595.53] an opportunity to make comment.
Thank you. Currently, we have probably between 1,500 and 2,000 tons of salt in our dome. We have a contract with Cargill Salt through the ODOT purchasing program. And right now, given that seven or eight days of heavy weather we had, you know, we're constantly trying to refill the dome, so as one of our truck rolls out, a delivery truck is rolling in. But this will give us the opportunity to repeat the process that we've done for probably at least the last 20 years of going in with the ODOT program.
Thank you.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Move to suspend. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 18-0-007 has been approved. Resolution number 18-R-101.
A resolution requesting an advance of funds collected for the benefit of the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak? Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. This is an annual resolution that authorizes the Lake County Auditor to disperse funds in advance of the final settlements. So it's a requirement for us to get our money, and I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel? Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Resolution number 18-R-101 has been adopted. Resolution number 18-R-102.
A resolution authorizing the Mentor City Manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Coastal Management Access Grant Program and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak? Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zanpedro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. As counsel is aware, our grants writer has been tasked with trying to assist in our shoreline erosion problem. Unfortunately, locating funds to build the revetment walls like we've built most recently in that endangered area by the marina, those grant monies just don't exist. This is an opportunity for the city to leverage a coastal coastline rehabilitation project which will act as a break wall. This program in particular, we are looking to go to CMAG, which is the second step. We've already, Abe Bruckman was successful in giving us a Lake Area Protection Fund grant to fund consultant work who are marine engineers to study areas along our remaining coastline on our preserve by which we can create a natural breakwater with, by sinking piers and tying down trees and other large obstacles that if you go out there now, you'll see there and that are coming down from the cliffside as well. It also involves sort of regrading some of the cliffside, using those natural materials to try to bring back the beach, the wild beach that we used to have there, which just 10 years ago was, if we were talking about boardwalks overlooking those wild beaches, the beaches aren't there anymore. So this is designed to permit us to do a pilot project. The idea is that the cost would be significantly less than the $1,000 perlinial foot cost we have with revetment walls. But because it's also wild habitat restoration, we are able to leverage funds. So this is the second step in that process. Try a pilot program, see if we're able to recapture some of our coastline, which will serve to create a break wall against that erosion problem we're having there, and then maybe leverage that into an even larger six-figure grant with the Great Lakes Restoration down the road.
Mr. President?
Yes.
You know, as I read this, kind of what I'm sensing is we would use this grant money to gather up all the trees that have fallen in and use those to make like a natural revetment on the face of the cliff. Is that...
That is essentially correct. It's in select points to capture sort of the literal current in the sand and try to recapture that beach that was gone. So part of this is to build out that shoreline again, and that begins with having sort of a break wall, or I think, I don't know if the term groin is the right term there, but just small pockets by which the nature itself will start to fill in the beach that used to be there.
So we would gather the trees that are laying there and waiting to float away, or maybe they floated there. And what would we do? We tie them together?
They're basically, yeah, they're basically anchored down to piers that are driven into the lake bed.
You know, this is brilliant. This is such a great idea, I mean, because we've got those materials laying there, and we gather them up, which cleans the beach, makes it look more pristine, and then we use that to prevent further erosion. Right?
This is a project that's met with some success on the western part of Lake Erie's basin near Sandusky. They're already doing this there.
I looked that up, and I saw pictures, I think it's Sandusky. They had pictures there. I thought, this is A1. Great. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Move to suspend. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Resolution number 18-0-102 has been adopted. Resolution number 18-R-103.
A resolution in support of the Mentor Marsh Protection Project Phase Two in the city of Mentor proposed for submission to OPWC NRAC District Seven Clean Ohio Conservation Fund by the Cleveland Museum of Natural History and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak? Thank you, Mr. President. And since this is in his neighborhood, Mr. Zanpedro?
I know the area well. I shop out front there quite often now. This is, the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, who we've partnered greatly with in terms of restoring the marsh area, they are a significant steward of that marsh area, and this is part of their project to acquire another isolated parcel that rings the marsh. This is a little over six-acre parcel that is, I'm told anecdotally, predominantly marshy and wet. And they've asked us for a letter of support in their efforts to obtain funds to put this into that marsh preserve that they have and steward.
Counsel? Move to suspend. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Orderance, or excuse me, resolution number 18-R-103 has been adopted. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Managers report. Mr. Philippiak?
Thank you, Mr. President. And let me reiterate my congratulations to you and to Vice President Landik. We're looking forward to working closely with you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank former counsel president, Councilwoman Dowling. For the last two years, it's been an extraordinary experience from our administration to be able to work so closely and cooperatively with the council and your office in particular. It's been very enjoyable, both professionally and personally, and so thank you for all your help. Few things to report on. With extreme low temperatures, followed by thawing, several businesses in town have experienced broken water pipes, resulting in some significant water damage. The fire department would like businesses, business owners and residents to remember that water lines are vulnerable during these weather conditions, and that some surveying in less protected areas should be done on a regular basis. It's a good idea to know where shut-offs are and to learn the signs of frozen pipes. Additional information is posted on our fire department's website. Today, Marquand's Construction began preparation of the Springbrook Gardens Park Site, which will include establishing positive drainage throughout the work area, followed by mixing the Garfield Pond dredge material with the native soils and grading that material to the proper elevations. Tree clearing at the Two-Town Ditch Stream Enhancement and Detention Project Site is expected to begin probably this Friday or perhaps the following Monday. The city is in the process of finalizing environmental easements over the property as was part of our Army Corps of Engineers permit, and we expect that those easements will be recorded with the Lake County Recorder by this, the end of this week, and copies will be forwarded to the Army Corps. Once they receive them and give us approval, earth-moving activities can begin, so it should go pretty fast after that. The Miragold Road Reconstruction Contractor is expected to continue working on sanitary laterals replacements this week. Work will continue throughout the winter months as weather permits. The very popular Lake County Chili Open will be held at Black Brook Golf Course again on January 27th from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Cost is $18 per person, and all proceeds benefit the United Way of Lake County. You can register by calling our Parks Department. We want to congratulate a couple of our police officers. Congratulations to Sergeant Mark Stansbury, who is retiring after 25 years of service with us. Besides being a supervisor, Sergeant Stansbury also served as firearms instructor and a SWAT team sniper during his tenure with the Police Department. And we also want to congratulate Patrolman Brian Distelrath, who I generally don't like to congratulate people who are resigning from this, but it certainly brings the city distinction. Patrolman Distelrath recently resigned and to join, to take a position as a special agent with the FBI. His enlistment with them makes the fifth former Mentor officer in recent years to go on to a career with the FBI. So I keep telling the chief, he's training them far too well. We have to try to keep some of them. I think it's appropriate on the night, Council President Krieger, that you're appointed, that I give, I'm happy, I wanted to bring counsel and offer you up a report on the status of our deer management program in the city. It was just about five, almost exactly five years ago where we started this program, and I know that was important to you as one of your primary agenda items, and all members of council have been fantastically cooperative in formulating a comprehensive program. After five years, I think it's important to offer both council and our residents an assessment of where we are, because by the assessment of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, they continue to look at our program as a model for the rest of Ohio and to hold it up as an example. This year, they estimate that we are approximately at about 391, which I don't know how they use a very complex formula to arrive at this, but apparently we have about 391 deer in our community, which works out to just under 15 deer per square mile in the city. The ideal number that we would seek in an urban environment is somewhere between 10 and 15 per acre. So after five years of really hard work and cooperation, both with education hunting program and our efforts of our police department, we have reduced our herd to really levels that sustained levels. So we are actually now entering into a maintenance mode. To give you some numbers just for consideration, at the peak of our program, which would probably be fiscal year, well, calendar year 2014, we saw about 138 deer hunted and then 277 deer removed through our culling efforts for a total of 415. That number was cut in half, less than approximately half in the last couple of years. Last year, that total numbers were down to about 225. And this year, we've removed about, just about 50 deer through the hunting efforts. That season is fast coming to a close, just a few more weeks remaining. And we have been issued only 60 tag permits this year, which is believed that that is all will be required in our city to be able to maintain our current levels. If you recall, one of the primary reasons why we began a maintenance program was the recognition that our community was highlighted as the highest in northeast Ohio for deer vehicular accidents. Back in 2013, which is the year we started, we had 96 accidents involving vehicles and deer in our community. Last year, we had our lowest in over a decade, where we had just 27, and that's actually down from 42 the prior year. So we have met nearly every one of our goals over this five-year period. We are at a maintenance level. We have seen the ecosystem in our public areas and our private areas come back in terms of regrowth of the understory. We have had very, very positive comments, and I know that council members have too, about the protection of their sustenance of their private property and landscaping and things of that nature. And the public is safer as a result. So all things considered, and I think at the top of that list is that after five years of work, we have had not one single safety-related incident related to this program in the city. So a lot of that congratulations goes to the Police Department, as well as the Parks and Recreation Department and their Natural Resource Management staff. So, yeah, really happy to be able to report that to you, and thank you again for your ongoing cooperation and support of that program, because we were the first in this area, and many, many communities, not only northeast Ohio, but around Ohio, have looked to us an example and have adopted programs that are turning out to be very successful in their communities as well. So thank you for that. Any questions on that? We're happy to answer.
Just one thing, Mr. Philippiak. Now, next year, will we just have the bow hunting and no calling at all?
No, I think we will probably always have a small component that includes our culling efforts, mainly because, again, the first priority for our program has always been public safety. And because our city has so much, so many large, open, public spaces, we have felt that to be most confident that we are protecting the public, we have, I think we'll probably always want to reserve the cultivation and management within the public areas, our public parks and our recreation facilities, and reserve that strictly for use for city staff so that we can close off those areas while we're performing those activities. And those generally take place in a short number of weeks, starting right about now and running through the early part of March. And again, being able to utilize our public safety personnel to close off the perimeter of those while we're engaging in those activities, we're able to go in, do our work quickly, and it's been successful. So I wouldn't want to, at this stage, consider putting the public at minimally higher, but perhaps higher, level of risk by not being able to control that environment as we have in the past.
Okay, thank you.
But still a small, I think that that will probably become a smaller overall component of the program. Final piece of business for you this evening, I want to...
Wait, Mr. Philippiak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, there was also a component where we were trying to deflect deer from crossing areas. I can't remember the exact word. I know Abe had worked on it.
Deer deter devices.
Yes, deterring. Any comments on that part of the program, whether that was successful, whether that was a worthwhile cause, and what were we doing there?
Well, I think admittedly, it's difficult to really say how successful they are. What we can say is that the corridors that we've selected for the implementation of those devices have dramatically lower overall vehicle accidents in those particular corridors. Obviously, those numbers are down throughout the city, as I just reported to you. It's difficult to say if they're primarily responsible or just the overall reduction in population. I think both are helping. So it's hard to say, but we have clear evidence that they work. So I think they're helping. It's just difficult to quantify that.
Thank you.
Donovan?
Mr. Manager, any comment on the meat and where it goes and the people it's helping?
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Donovan. The number off the top of my head escapes me, but I know it exceeds over 20,000 pounds of meat that has been harvested and donated to local food banks that serve the Mentor and Lake County area. 100% of the animals that we harvest through our police culling efforts are harvested and converted for use for the food banks in northeast Ohio and predominantly Lake County.
Thank you. I think it's important that people know that, too.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
A question. At one time, we had talked about getting more, and I believe it's through the culling, into some of the industrial areas. Have we been successful with that? Has that worked well?
We have been. I think as we have, our program has matured, both our natural resource staff and our police staff have made more and more contacts in the private sector with private property owners, to be able to get on their sites and not only conduct some of our own activities there, but encourage, because the way our hunting program is set up, we have an inventory of private property and an inventory of interested hunters, so we try to pair those up. So we have been successful at opening up areas where some of those pockets of more dense populations exist, and we'll continue to do that. And, you know, we have to thank our private property owners and business owners in town who have been very cooperative with us, because they recognize the benefits to themselves as well. So we're getting better at it, and I think those efforts will continue.
I think it shows in my industrial park. We moved in in '87, and the landscaping, we had taxes, which the deer absolutely loves. And this was the first summer that we actually had to prune them. The deer had been doing it for us, so we had to have our landscaper do it. So it definitely is showing, and it's nice to see the vegetation come back, so.
There's a job creation component to this, too.
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, counsel, I want to recognize some new businesses that are in town. The Easy Stop Mini Mart at 9570 Diamond Center Drive. Lake Health Mentor Wellness Campus Live Healthy Fitness Center has opened at 8655 Market Street. Marion's Mediterranean Restaurant at 7701 Reynolds Road. Physiotherapy Solutions at 8500 Station Street. The Himalayan Cave at 9130 Tyler Boulevard. Mentor iPhone Repair at 7745 Mentor Avenue. Park Pet and Play LLC at 7471 Tyler Boulevard. Swiss Tex LLC at 7722 Lake Shore Boulevard. Healthy Solutions at 7322 Industrial Park Boulevard. Shelby's Sugar Shop at 850 Mentor Avenue. And also, we're very glad to welcome Congressman Dave Joyce, our representative in the 14th District, who has located his offices at 8500 Station Street. So we thank all of them for their investment in our community and wish them great success in the future. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Clerk's correspondence?
Counsel is in receipt of a transfer of a liquor permit from Doughboys LLC DBA Tony Sacco's Coal Oven Pizza to TS Dynamic Acquisition, Inc., DBA Tony Sacco's Coal Oven Pizza, as well as Mentor Municipal Court Month End Report, November 2017. That's all.
Thank you. Commission committee reports, we are in possession of the meeting minutes, Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, October 10th, 2017, and November 14th, 2017, and also the Municipal Planning Commission minutes from November 30th, 2017. Any old business?
President?
Yes, Mr. Marn?
I'll also bring this up here. Mr. Philippiak just mentioned the Lake Health opening, and with the current news that came out today about the restructuring of our school system, I thought it might be a good idea to have a joint work session with Mentor School Board, City Council, so that way we're all on the same page and making sure that we're moving forward in an efficient manner, because as you know, also being part of the Economic Development Committee is, you know, to go hand in hand in making ourselves the economic driving force that we are currently in Mentor.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I think this would fall under old business, but I was disappointed the last couple days to get a call from a few residents in regards to another resident who was keeping a dog in their backyard when the weather got down to about six below, and it sent me to our code manual, and maybe Richard could speak to this a little better. And we have pretty strong code language in regards especially to companion animals and their treatment. So I think this is a moment to just ask that everybody think about, you know, the dog in the backyard and bringing it inside, because six below, even if you do have a doghouse, is pretty hard for an animal to survive. So I was hoping that maybe Richard could just speak for a moment or two, if he would, about what the code means in relation here. These people have called the APL, and I guess they came out and said, "Well, you know, the animal has a doghouse, but at six below, I think that's hard for anything to survive." So I would like to think that this wouldn't happen again as it continues to get cold this winter.
Mr. Henny?
Yes, I did get that request, and timely, the manager even spoke to it in another venue tonight, when he talked about businesses having frozen pipes bursting in water damage. And when that's happening, that should tell everybody that the conditions outside are very extreme, when the pipes are freezing that ordinarily are fine because they are indoors or close to indoors. And we do have a number of code sections relative to tethering of animals, cruelty to animals, cruelty to companion animals, and you know, the decision of one person whether or not a condition warrants attention may not be shared by our police department. And so what I'd urge anyone is that if they feel that an animal is suffering under conditions like this that are being perpetrated by an owner or a person who's harboring that animal, call the police department. Call them right away. They'll come out, the police here are obviously 24/7, and are much more capable of responding to an emergency at any hour of the day than, you know, some other office in the county. And report that condition. These can amount to up to first-degree misdemeanors, which means not only a penalty but jail time, and I urge residents to think about that. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, get too dramatic, but it seems to me every time something comes up where an animal has suffered at the hands of a human, bad results come for that person. Not only do you get to see your name on the docket of the local court, but you get to meet new friends, because people show up for your court hearings, including TV reporters and newspaper writers. It's just a bad result for everyone, especially for the animal that's suffering. So when it gets this cold out, and I know it maybe kind of snuck up on everybody, because it was a long fall, and a kind of a mild fall, but it got bad, and it got bad fast, and let's pay attention. So we have laws, they're on the books. Call the police department. You'll have someone at your door right away, and if it needs to be followed up on, they'll prosecute, and so will the law department.
Thank you, Mr. Henny. Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just a couple on top of that. Earlier this last year, we partnered with Mentor Community Cats, and I have got to say that they have been doing an awesome job, and they have been very active in the past few weeks during this cold spell, getting shelters out for these feral cats. They don't have owners, so they have been very active in doing that, and at great expense because they're, you know, completely self-funded. So they are doing an excellent job for the feral cat population.
Thank you.
Probably they're getting treated possibly better than a-
Dog?
Yes, exactly.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, new business. Counsel, we have boards and commissions appointments. We have three four-year terms on the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, ending 12/31/21. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Lisa Marinelli.
Mr. President, I would also like to make a nomination for John Cracker-
Yes.
-the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All right.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to nominate James Forrest-Gwin-
Forrest.
-for VZA.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? I mean, no other nominations. Julie, I need a second on that, don't I?
Second.
Okay, second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Okay, we now have four four-year terms on the Municipal Planning Commission, ending 12/31/21. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I nominate Bill Snow for Municipal Planning Commission term, ending 12/31/21.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Rick Cicero-
Thank you.
-for Municipal Planning Commission.
Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Brian Cook.
Thank you. And one more nomination?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Richard Thedeman.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? No? Then with that, I'd like a second.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
I now have two four-year terms on the Silver Service Commission, ending 12/31/21. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Diane Pauley.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Dan Lawan.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Do I have a second?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Now, we have two three-year terms on the Community Arts Commission, ending 12/31/20. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would like to nominate Jason Lee-
Thank you.
-term, ending 12/31/1920.
Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Stuart Abbey to the Community Arts Commission, term, ending 12/31/20.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Do I have a second?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
We now have two two-year terms on the Income Tax Board of Review, ending 12/31/19. Do I have any nominations?
What's this? Income tax?
Yes.
Bruce, did you have one?
Sure. Steve?
Mr. President? Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Steve Amerman.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate John Eaton.
Do I have any other nominations?
I'll second it, though.
All right, Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
We have one four-year term on the Tree Commission, ending 12/31/21. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate David Henshaw.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
We have one four-year term on the Tree Commission, ending 12/31/21. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate David Henshaw.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
We now have two two-year terms on the Income Tax Board of Review, ending 12/31/19. Do I have any nominations?
What's this? Income tax?
Yes.